Good evening, and we're back out of closed session. Thank you for your patience. I will now call the regular session for March eighteenth to order at six thirty-eight. May I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Finn?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Mayor Protem Boy?
Here.
Mayor Larson?
Here. Mr. King, can you please give us a report out of closed session?
Yes, the council met at closed session. Item B one was public employee performance evaluation titled City Manager. There was no report of action and the council didn't finish up on that item or B two, which was conference with labor negotiators. And then negotiator, the agency representative, the city council member, Julio Martinez and David Finn, and represent employee to city manager. Item B one and B two, no report of action, and the council is going to return to closed session at the end of open session. Item B three was conference with real property negotiators. The property is approximately six point two six acres of vacant land, described in the agenda. The agency negotiator, city manager Elizabeth Gibbs are designated, the negotiating party, City of Beaumont, and last thing, development partners. There was no report of action on that item.
Thank you very much, Mr. King. Can you please stand for the invocation of pensive allegiance? You want a vacation?
I'm getting a vacation.
I should know what you do.
May I put you on the table?
Okay, here I am, call.
Oh, oh, sorry. All right, please join me in word prayer. Definitely follow where we thank you for this time that we can come together as a community, Lord, here just to serve you, Lord, and to serve our constituents. Lord, may you please give us to serve in up here and may you bless all those first responders and those who protect our community and our country. Thank you for this time once again, together, and may we bless this heaven. Jesus save me.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. That brings us to item E, announcements for information of proclamations. Item B one, introduction of the interim police chief to George Walter.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Walter, can you come join us at the front?
Recording in progress.
Mayor, councilman, please introduce interim police chief George Walter. He is a dedicated enforcement professional with over two decades of service in public safety. He's been with us since two thousand and three, serving in various leadership roles, including lieutenant over support services, patrol watch commander, and detective bureau supervisor, most recently as captain since two thousand and twenty-two. Throughout his career, Chief Walter has demonstrated commitment to community engagement, foster training, and operational excellence. He has experience in dispatch records, property and evidence, and animal control. He has also played a key role in community relations, presenting on law enforcement matters to local organizations, schools, and business leaders. Chief Walter holds multiple post certifications, including management and supervisor credentials, and has extensive training in defensive tactics, crisis response, and active shooter instruction. His leadership and dedication to this community make him well-equipped to guide the department during this transition, so please join me in welcoming interim chief George Walter, as he continues to serve and protect Beaumont.
Yeah, I love to talk. I'm grateful that I can now serve the public in this capacity, and thank you for the trust.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
This one's for Jennifer. Mrs. Eustation, would you please join us? So it is my great honor to congratulate Jennifer Eustation, our finance director. She was awarded California Society of Municipal Finance Officers two thousand and twenty-four Volunteer of the Year Award.
Wow, yeah.
And what that means is, we know it as CSMFO. CSMFO is a dedicated to enhancing the knowledge, skills, and performance of individuals involved in municipal and local government, fiscal policy, and management across the state. Volunteers are essential to CSMFO's mission, helping to expand resources cost-effectively, foster professional development, strengthen networking, deliver high-quality training and events, and ensure a member-driven organization that meets the needs of municipal finance professionals. So at the two thousand and twenty-five conference recently, Jennifer was honored as the volunteer of the year in front of more than sixteen hundred of her professional finance peers. This is a very prestigious award, recognizing outstanding volunteers who go above and beyond to support CSMFO members and play a vital role in advancing the organization's mission. And I think we may have one or two members of CSMFO in the audience. Raise your hand, Michael. I think Michael knew before I did. Anyway, congratulations, Jennifer.
That lunch is on Jennifer tomorrow? Is that what I understood? Okay, that brings us to the public comment period. Any one person may address city council on any matter not on this agenda. There is a three-minute time limit on public comments. There will be no sharing or passing of time to another person. State law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking actions brought up by your comments. This meeting will be open to the public and conducted in virtual format. To be inclusive of all participation preferences, public comment participation is encouraged by emailing your any comments to the city clerk's office or by calling in using the phone number provided on the front of the agenda. Any one person wishing to speak can do so by filling out a form they were located at the back room and handing it to a staff member. Nicole, do we have any public comments at this time on items not on the agenda?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are taken as one action item unless an item is pulled for further discussion here or at the end of action items. Approval of all ordinances and resolutions to be read by title only. Are there any items to be pulled for discussion? Seeing none, are there any public comments on this item?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve consent items, consent calendar items G one through G six.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second. Have roll call, please?
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Boy?
Yes.
Mayor Laura?
Yes. That brings us to item U, youth council report. Looks like we have a youth council report this evening.
So my name is Cosette Campos.
And my name is Alex Ebonov.
And we are both representatives from the Beaumont Youth Council. So during our meeting last Tuesday, March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, we discussed the following topics.
So we welcomed the attendance of the Banning Youth City Council, and what happened was we first went over the park that is currently under construction, being went over the agendas versus the first stage and the second stage. And currently, the first stage is in progress to be completed between August and September, with a second stage being in progress.
So we also did updates on our subcommittees. So we were talking about our poster subcommittees and also our social media subcommittee so that we could get more youth outreach, so that we could help promote our council to the youth for any future members. And then we were also able to pick a logo for our youth council.
Excellent. At last, we went over the future events that are going to happen in the city, such as the Easter hunt events, the color run, and a few others, I believe.
And, yeah, the community cleanup.
Yes. And basically, with that, we concluded our meeting for last Tuesday.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Martinez?
Did you mention banning? You did? Okay, very well. Great job.
Okay, that brings us to item I, public hearings. Item I one, Beaumont Municipal Code Amendment, Chapter thirteen point zero eight Sewer System.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Presenting this item tonight is Kenyon Potter, wastewater principal engineer.
Good evening, Mayor Laura and council members. We're here tonight to hold a public hearing on a proposed ordinance that relates to our municipal code sewer, the title on sewer system. We're at present, it's silent and doesn't cover lift stations and forced mains. So we're bringing forward a proposed ordinance to cover that subject matter. So we asked that we hold a public hearing, and then after, waive the first reading of the entire ordinance. If you have any questions first, though, before we open the public hearing.
Yeah, if you hang on, we'll probably have questions once we open up the public hearing. Okay, I will open up the public hearing at six fifty. Do we have any public comments?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Okay, I will close the public hearing at six fifty and open it up for council discussion. Just, I have just a quick comment. I really think this shows a lot of forward thinking. I know that we've ended up with a lot of lift stations from previous years gone by, and there's a huge cost in maintenance of those lift stations. And so looking to try to tighten that up. One of the things, and I don't know if you put this in a municipal code like this, but as far, I see that you've described in detail what the equipment needs to do, but do you also describe or can you require certain equipment, or is that done somewhere else, just so that, like, if we had to buy pumps or generators, we don't have, you know, thirteen different sizes of pumps and different generators?
Right. We definitely have standards, with standard drawings and general standards that go into great detail on what's required. And there's some flexibility there, so we're not focused on one brand or, you know, this. But in terms of what's needed, the ordinance is at very high level.
Okay.
And it just sets forth requirements that, so we have something to give better guidance to developers. And the standards actually are already written, so if you want to see a copy of that, you're welcome to have a copy. And we will, at some point, we'll be putting it on the website. It's probably one of those updates that we have to do.
Okay, excellent. That's all I have. Thank you very much, though. I appreciate the effort on that.
You're welcome.
Mayor Protem Boy?
Yeah, if no further comments, I will move to waive the first full reading and approve by title only an ordinance of the city council, the city of Beaumont, California, amending Chapter thirteen point zero eight Sewer System by adding the new section thirteen point zero eight point four one five, lift station and forced main facilities to the Beaumont Municipal Code.
I'll second that. Roll call, please?
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Boy?
Yes.
Mayor Laura?
Yes. That brings us to, oh, sorry, I lost my spot. That brings us to item J one, authorized employment contract with economic development director. Carrie Mendoza?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you, you have the employment contract for Mr. Kirk Pelzer. He is the economic development director candidate that has been selected after a outside recruiting firm assisted us with this recruitment. We received over twenty applications, and he was put through the same panel that I recently described to you that Mr. Romo next to me went through. There was an entry level, an executive panel, and the city manager's panel. And then, together with the city attorney, Elizabeth Gibbs, negotiated the terms of the contract and the agreement before you under his John's review. And Mr. Pelzer is available and here to introduce himself, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about the contract or the terms.
Thank you very much. Nicole, do we have any public hearing, public comments on this item?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Okay, then I'll open it up for council discussion. Councilmember Finn?
Yes, I can ask the same question I did as our new city manager's contract. This does still follow the same format as other previous directors, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Identical.
Councilmember White?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Mr. Pelzer a question or two.
Kirk. There you go.
Thank you, Carrie. So, Mr., good evening.
Good evening. You're coming to us from the city of Pomona, correct?
That's right.
Okay. Pomona's a lot different than Beaumont, especially when you start talking about economic development. So my thought, what I'd like to get from you is just, if you've given, I know it's early, but I'm sure you did your research on our city. Do you have any ideas, suggestions, things that, you know, that stood out for you when you first started looking at Beaumont?
Yeah, I mean, Beaumont is a growing community. I have worked for other smaller and growing communities off and on throughout my career. I've been a consultant to large, medium, and small communities, always doing economic development, redevelopment type of work. What attracted me was a sort of an ascending momentum that is obvious from the growth that has occurred and growth in quality residential, quality commercial, quality retail. Where I'm coming from is a largely built-out community that has different needs and different characteristics. And frankly, I saw this as a positive energized opportunity to work with a community that is in a growth mode.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm excited. We needed a development director, so welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you. If I might, my wife Letitia is here with me tonight, and my mother, Donna Pelzer. So.
Welcome. Congratulations. Do we have any public comments?
Yeah, we'll do that. Sounds like a good idea. You have a motion?
I'll move to approve the employment agreement with Kirk, excuse me, Kirk Pelzer for the economic development director and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
I'll second. Roll call, please?
No public comments.
I apologize.
I have no written request. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Excited to get you on board. Sorry.
And I'll do roll call, ready? Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Boy?
Yes.
Mayor Laura?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank all of you. Thank you.
And Kirk, would you like to get a photo?
Yeah, come on up. Up here. Don't you bring your family up as well?
Mayor, if I might, I have one other new employee in the audience. It's not on the agenda. I would just, Laura James, can you stand, please? Laura is our new economic development manager. We will be introducing her formally April first. She does start with us Monday, so the economic development team is starting stuff. I didn't want to steal Kirk's thunder, but Laura drove out to meet Kirk. She purposely drove out to meet Kirk.
Oh, nice. Okay, that brings us to item J two, proposed refunding of outstanding community facilities, district CFD bonds.
Thank you, Mayor. Your financing team is here once again. We have Michael Bush, your financial advisor, Brian Corvath, your bond counsel, Shane Spicer, special tax consultant, and there you are, Thomas with Stiefel. All yours, Michael.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Before we start, I want to say a few things if the council doesn't mind. I've worked with Kirk. I saw him when I walked in. I'm like, what are you doing here? He's like, I'm the new director. It's a great hire.
Great.
I've also known Gus for a while, too. Another good hire. And then, just to give Elizabeth a little bit more on the CSMFO issue, there are a lot of volunteers at CSMFO, hundreds if not thousands. To be called out as the single one is a big deal for that group. I mean, there's thousands of people that get involved. So congratulations to Jennifer for that.
Eight by ten glossies next meeting.
Autographs. Well, I'm happy to be here to present this item for a couple of reasons. For a few of the council members, you're aware, this is somewhat where we all started, is talking about CFDs and how to address them and to lower the assessment and deal with a variety of issues. So this now makes it, I think, my tenth year here. Like, we started in two thousand and fifteen. I was really excited when this came up, because I've been waiting for this for a while, to bring this to you. So we're, Mr. Jacob and I are going to present this item. And I've given the finance team a little bit of insight on how we did the last transaction that was multiple CFDs. And I think what you're going to be given tonight, and I'm sure some of you are aware, is some options and some choices of how you want us to move forward. There's a lot of CFDs that are currently callable, meaning you could refund them. Some meet a certain threshold that's typically a standard in the industry, which is a three percent savings threshold. Others aren't not quite at three percent. But there's two aspects we want you to consider as we bring these forward to you. The first basically is, when we did this the last time, you also looked at dollar amounts. And you decided, okay, who are we? I remember, it might have been Councilmember White. Forget, forgive me if I don't get this exactly right, but I remember the conversation was something like, okay, it's not three percent, but who are we to say that two hundred dollars a year is not significant? So you're going to see some options like that. And the third, just to point out, the information we're giving to you is based on current rates in the market, as you are aware, is all over the place, up and down. So it wouldn't take much for some of these to be better, or even to be worse, for example. So I think what we're seeking from you tonight in general is just guidance on how you'd like for us to move forward with these. So there are a total of seventeen issues of about a hundred and twenty-one million dollars of outstanding that can be refinanced. Some bond issues are callable, and some we're going to recommend to you to do in the future. We always look at those with escalators. So there's a few tonight that have escalators. They're a little more challenging, I think, to do in this environment. They may be a recommendation to go forward. We are looking pretty far back, all the way to the Beaumont Financing Authority and some issues. So you'll see that in a couple of them. And several other ones are from ninety-three dash one that you'll also be familiar with. There are a couple that are on the cusp that we want you to kind of focus on. Some I think will be pretty straightforward and direct. And the two specific, we are Termin Hills and Sundance. And more specifically, I think it's multiple issues within Sundance. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Jacob. He's going to walk you through the debt profile and walk you through some of the savings assumptions that he developed and running numbers for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Bush, and good evening, council members. My name is Tom Jacob. I'm here representing Stiefel, the underwriter on the proposed refinancing. So as Mike mentioned, we put together the city's CFD debt profile, all the CFDs that are outstanding. We looked at those that are eligible to be refinanced this year, and then analyzed them based on current market conditions. And so I'll go through that. We have a lot of detail on the next couple of slides, but I'll just touch on the high points here. So over the next two slides, we have the city's outstanding CFD debt profile. And so the financing team maintains this, and along with staff consistently monitors the debt profile to see if there are any refinancing candidates. And so, as Mike mentioned, there are, the city CFD debt profile has thirty-one total bond issues, two hundred and forty-four million in par value outstanding. Now, of those, there are seventeen that are eligible to be refinanced this year, totaling a hundred and twenty-one million in outstanding par value. This is just the first page. I won't go through every single deal here, but just some observations that I wanted to point out. And forgive me if I sound like a broken record. I know Mike talked about this, but the first four issues that you see at the top of the chart, you can see are issued through the BFA, the Beaumont Financing Authority. So those are the first four issues that we're looking at refinancing. As you work your way from the left side of the chart, all the way to the right side of the chart, you can see what the issuer is, or who the issuer is, what CFD it is, what neighborhood it represents, the outstanding par value, the final term of the financing, the original financing, the final coupon, and the earliest date that you can refinance those. The ones that are highlighted in blue are all of those that are eligible to be refinanced this year. The last thing I wanted to point out, under the earliest date to refinance column, you'll see that some that are callable this year, some are callable at a hundred or par, meaning that there is no premium that needs to be paid back to investors in order to refinance these bonds. Other bond issues have a two or a three percent premium, which, you know, impacts the savings associated with those financings. This is more of the same on the following page. This is the balance of the bond issues in the city's CFD program. You know, again, I'm not going to go through each of these, but there are a couple of ones that I wanted to point out, as Mike alluded to, that staff, along with the financing team under council's direction, pooled together or did a pooled refinancing in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, and two thousand and twenty-one. That is underneath, you can see on the issuer column, the PIA, that is the Public Improvement Authority. So that is the authority under which the city issues pooled CFD refunding bonds. So this is a process that the city has gone through several times over the last couple of years. So this is just the same information that we've repeated, but it's summarized in a bar chart. I think this is much easier to understand here. As I mentioned, this year there are a hundred and twenty-one million in bond issues that are eligible to be refinanced. And then you can see those that are, the earliest eligible call date is in twenty-six, twenty-seven, all the way through thirty-one. So I want to say that just because there are those bond issues that are eligible to be refinanced this year, does not mean that they are economic to refinance, as I'll walk you through on one of the following slides. And that really is due to not only the call premium that I mentioned, but also due to the market conditions during the time at which the original bonds were issued, the interest rates that were achieved on those bond issues, and among a few other characteristics as well. So just very briefly about the market, Mike had touched on that it is a bit volatile in the market right now, really due to the fact that we have some economic data on one hand that is showing a little bit of a slowdown or weakness in the economy. And then also you have what the Fed's response is to adjusting its short-term Fed funds rate based on the economic data that they receive. Obviously, in Obviously, inflation has been a key theme over the last couple of years. And certainly, some of the new administration policies and how those factor into the market and the economy as well. We did note that that blue line on the far right-hand side of the screen, you can see that is the start of the year. So all in all, you've seen generally short-term rates. That's, so on this chart, we have tax exempt rates. We have a short-term rate, which is the two-year rate. We have a medium term, which is the 10-year. And then we also have a long term, which is the 30-year rate. And so if you can kind of see that they've been bouncing around a little bit, the shorter-term rates and the mid-medium-term rates, the two and the 10-year, have generally been trending down since the beginning of the year. So I know we're just getting started on this one. Market conditions are constantly evolving, constantly changing, so it's something we're going to be keeping a close eye on. So the first item that we're looking to seek your guidance on this evening is establishing the various savings thresholds. So again, as Mr. Bush mentioned, we're looking for guidance on setting the net present value percent savings. Again, GFOA frequently mentions as best practices a 3% threshold to evaluate the appropriateness of a financing. However, they don't mention, because it's not very CFD-specific, there's no mention of annual per parcel savings. And so we've also included that for your benefit to evaluate that as well. And so you'll see here is the, this chart that we have here are the deals that are eligible to be refinanced this year. And we've highlighted in the blue column, the net present value percent savings. So simply, and I hope I'm not getting too much into the weeds here, the net present value percent is essentially the net present value savings divided by the par amount outstanding. And so if that is greater than 3%, GFOA, you know, says that, you know, it's an appropriate transaction to review and to consider refinancing. As Mike mentioned, there are several that are teetering on the edge. We can see one of the BFA transactions in 2015, 93-1 Improvement Area 18 Stetson is right there at 2.7%. So just a couple of basis points of movement in interest rates could tilt that north of 3% NPV savings. But all in all, in that blue column, you'll see that savings range from negative 5.3% all the way up to six point, positive 6.7%, so all over the place. The annual savings per parcel, excuse me, range anywhere from negative $3, just the one in 2018, all the way up to $479 in annual savings per parcel. So a pretty big jump and significant savings achieved based on current market conditions. And so we're looking for your guidance for a threshold for the NPV percent. And then certainly, if you'd like to give some guidance on the savings per parcel as well. I will say, secondly, we're also looking for your guidance on removing an escalating structure when possible. So there are two transactions which have escalating structures, CFD 93-1 Improvement Area 17C and Improvement Area 8D. You can see the current annual payments here at the bottom of your screen, 2% escalating structure on both transactions. So the two options that we have here are to maintain that escalating structure at 2%, which would, you know, based on current market conditions, give you about $225 in annual savings per year. Alternatively, the city could look at flattening that escalator, removing it altogether, creating level payments. The issue with that structure, with the latter structure, is that by doing so, you actually have payments that are higher than your current payments in the earlier years. So it's creating some higher payments or dis-savings in the first couple of years. Now, this is all based on current market conditions, and if rates go down, there could be an opportunity in which those new payments are not greater than the existing payments. The same exercise with Improvement Area 8D. Again, we noticed that if you flatten out that, remove that escalator, you actually do have payments that are higher in the first couple of years. But of course, as you flatten that out, savings will end up growing over time. So that are the two I know we've talked about. You know, we brought this option to council before. And so we are looking for your guidance on those two factors. Number one, establishing the savings thresholds. And number two, should, for example, the improvement areas not have any level of dis-savings, is removing that escalator something that council would like to proceed with? So I know I went through quite a bit of information, but myself, Mike Bush, and, oh yes, did you have, excuse me, one more.
I forgot to bring up the, the timing of the issue. So this item is being brought to you tonight specifically for your guidance, but we are racing the clock to try and get all of this done and the bond sold before your special tax consultant has to file the assessment, which is in August. So our goal is to try and wrap this up sometime late June, early July. Give him enough time to do all the new information, put all the new information together and report it to the county. So your direction tonight will allow us to do that.
Good evening, council members. Brian Forbath from Stradlin. The one other thing, just the important part for us about getting direction tonight is there's, there's a bunch of documents and things that need to be prepared to move this forward. And so we sort of, we need to get direction so we have a baseline of the understanding of, one, the documents that need to be drafted and what we're going to present to the rating agencies in terms of the package of the credit of the transactions. And things could change slightly. Obviously, if a deal comes in and out of meeting your savings thresholds, we can either remove it or add it, but we sort of need a general baseline of what are sort of the core districts that we think we're going to be included in. And so that's sort of the, the basis of what we're really hoping to get tonight, to have a, a basic understanding of what to bring back to you at a later council meeting to approve. And a part of, part of your direction to us will go into what it is that the thresholds that the council will actually approve in the authorizing resolutions that, once you put those in there, will be sort of bound to accomplish in order to include those transactions in, in the, in the deal. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
So because we have some council members that live in CFDs, I think the way we've done it in the past is talk initially at a high level and maybe address the questions that are in the staff report. And then if they decide to refund, then it would come back and we would do sort of the rotation process where they step out. But at the high-level discussion that we're having tonight, we're okay because this involves, this would fall under the public generally exception.
Public generally policy for what to bring back, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, could I just get some clarification?
Sure.
So if the, if we have a specific question about one that may be ours, is that, is that a question we shouldn't be asking?
We shouldn't.
Okay.
At this level. The, let me just go back to the staff report.
That's okay. I can do a hypothetical. Thank you, Jessica. Okay, so I do, I do have a couple of questions. I'm not sure.
You're welcome.
Okay. Well, I don't need to all.
Let me do a public comment first.
Sure.
Okay. Nicole, do you have a public comment, please?
I have no written request. Do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Okay, I'll open it up for council comments. Councilmember White.
Okay. So I have a couple of questions, then I'll give you my first opinion until I hear everyone else talk, and then I'll give you my final opinion. So let's, let's talk about the two that have escalators and, and neither one of those are, just for the record, my, I'm in Stetson, so my item is I, Improvement Area 18. So these are 17C and 8D, right? 8D and 17C, right?
Yes.
Can you bring that slide back up?
It's, uh.
I think it's slide eight or...
These are the existing, these are the existing payments, yeah. And if you want to go to the end.
Yeah, there we go. That's, that's what I wanted to see. So I just want to, my, my, my thought on this, on the second one, the first one, I think we can, first of all, I think we get rid of all escalators. I've always felt we should do that. If we can find a way to do it and it makes sense, we should do it.
Right.
The second one though brings up questions for me. I understand the payments are going to go up.
Are you talking about this, sorry, Lloyd, are you talking about the second option or the second CFD?
You can't see where I'm pointing on my screen.
No.
Right there. Eight, no, 17C.
Okay.
The possible savings at the end of that is up to $1,000, right? So even though it's, and what's the most that would start at? What would be the largest increase early on on that?
$259 increase.
It would go up to 59 for the year.
Per parcel.
And, but after the fifth year, it would start going down?
The, in 2031 is the last year that payments would be higher than they currently.
Okay.
That's the breaking.
And how, do we know how many houses? Is that on one of your?
It's on one of the charts, yeah.
215.
Okay. I don't know about on that one. If it were me, I would say I want that savings.
Can I share one thing?
Please.
And I'm sorry, I didn't reference this. All of these transactions will be refinanced with a new 10-year term, non-call term.
That was my next question.
So whatever you do with one of these is there for 10 years. So the first option, you could see above that escalator continuing. My, my gut feeling in working with you over the years is you wouldn't want to do that because it locks in the escalator for 10 more years.
A couple of thoughts I had about that one. They start, 2031 is when they start to save money. 2032. And so we've already, we're, we're real smart up here and we already calculated everything in the red there. And so they're saving, they're, they're gonna, they have dis-savings. I don't think I've heard that term before, but they have dis-savings of 1295, 17? About 1295 for the first four years. What are their savings for the last 24 years, 14 years?
I think what he's asking, what is the increase that they're going to get for those first five years? And then what is their ultimate savings over time? Projected savings over time.
I, I didn't think you'd have the answer to this, but the...
Good evening, Shane Spicer, Spicer Consulting. I haven't done the aggregate of all the savings for those years that you're asking. That's pretty easy math to get you, but just to put it in perspective, because I understand increase and then savings. So right now, this, that CFD is set to do, let's call it $2,400, okay? With the refinancing, that would go up to $2,654 and stay at $2,654. Over that period of time, right now, from $2,400, it'll go up to $3,400. So in real dollars, you're talking about $2,400 to $3,400 versus $2,600 level.
But, so the $2,600 would have, it would have no savings for them, correct, for the first three or four years?
Right, right. You're going to end up, they're going to increase by that amount for those first three years, but they're going to save every year after that point.
Okay.
It, it ranges. It ranges from zero to 1,000.
Okay. I definitely think we need that before we, I mean, we can figure it out. But, so my question to you, Michael, this will be a tough question for you. Assume you own a home in Tournament Hills. And you know, over the next four years, your, your payments will go up if we do something now. If we wait four years to do something on that, let's, we'll talk about the interest rates in a second. But if we wait for four years and do something on that, our biggest concern is interest rates, right?
Yep.
And so you own one of these houses, Michael. Would you recommend that we, we get rid of the escalator or?
You did this to me last time.
That was going to be my question.
I would, any bond that has an escalator built into it, I would wait. Meaning it's a premium to call it, more than 100% at par. So 102 or 103. This one's, I think, a 103. So if you wait, the premium goes down, you can refinance it without it. The, the other option that you have is just give us direction. If the savings for the first year is zero, to execute it at any time. Like, just, that could be the direction to, to the staff or to us, like, hey, we want to take out escalators. At any point, the first year is zero and there are savings thereafter. If the market moves, we can try to get into the market. Now, you're timing the market no matter what.
Right.
I mean, we could start a refinancing and then get to the end and the rates be moving away from us and we're not there. And then we just have to wait. But any, any premium, you know, over time, the premium is going to go down. It's going to build in savings every year.
So what you're saying specifically for this one is if we did, took that approach now and they would have no savings the very first year, no, they would have a dis-savings the first year?
If you did it right now, right? As, with the call premium that's in place, correct? In other words, you're paying 103% of the par amount to call it early.
Right, right.
Right now. That's one of the reasons why there's.
Well, I just want to understand your, your suggestion that we could start off where there is no dis-savings the first year, but there's less overall savings in that last year than what you're showing us.
You could give direction to the team, like with all of these. I want a minimum of 3% savings on every transaction and you can move an escalator, an escalating CFD forward as long as the first year doesn't have to savings.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Right.
Right, and meaning we would have to wait, but give them direction that once they're monitoring the market value and once it reaches that, then they would pull the trigger for us based off of the parameters that we gave them now.
Let me ask you a question. Tom, do you have any idea how much movement would have happened for this to get to zero?
I think he put it on here. 1.4, he put it on.
Okay. So it's a pretty big move, right? Again, because of the premiums.
Okay, okay.
So if I could jump in. So it sounds like if we go with the GFOA recommendation, they would need to be at 103% and that would be the time that we would then call it?
The GFOA recommendation is just a 3% savings in net present value.
Okay.
When these transactions are, when the CFDs are put in place and all your CFDs work this way, we try to structure them in such a way that if there is a call period, that they all kind of align so we can do them together. And so the way we go out to the market is we say, hey, we want to be able to call this bond with all the other ones. And the only way the market accepts that is if we put a premium. So this one has a premium, whereas some of the other ones do not. So in this one, you need a lot more savings because you got the premium, you got to pay first plus, you know, to get to the 3%.
If I may just add, so, you know, again, this is an opportunity this year. Depending on where interest rates next year are, when we come, we could come back. There's a couple other transactions that are going to be callable again next year. This deal would be callable again next year. Instead of at a 103, it's at a 102. It'll be callable at a 101 the year following that and a par the year after that. So just, if you, it's not a decision you have to move this forward tonight or you're going to lose this opportunity. I think we're just presenting this as, this is a potential opportunity. You may decide that that's an opportunity better, we should, it'd be better for us to wait on that one or not. And so that, I think that's the direction we're looking for is, some of these ones that are callable at par, you know, there, there is no more premium with it and, and there's savings today, there's going to be savings tomorrow. There's some of these ones that have these premiums, depending on where interest rates go, of course, the premium's going to be less, it's going to be cheaper to call those bonds, although interest rates could move against us or in favor of us. And so that makes sense.
Yeah, okay, okay. And then, so do you have any idea when the, there would not be a premium on that?
Yeah, three years from now. Yeah, yeah, so.
Okay. And then on one of the first pages, you don't have to go back to it, but you, you showed us the rates or the, the chart for the 10, two-year, 10-year and 30-year. But if, if,
You think about this?
If we are required to keep the terms, not change the term ending date, how do you use a 30-year? Or was that just for information?
This is just for informational purposes only.
Okay.
Just to show you the trends in interest rates over the past year and a half.
We are not recommending extending terms.
No, matching terms.
Yeah, you what?
We're not recommending extending the terms beyond their.
Right, we're not, yeah, we're not going to prove that. I didn't, I don't think that's a law, but we're not going to prove.
Correct.
Okay. And when we did the group, I guess you call them group, the PIA, all those, the term, the term on those is, is the longest of all the ones that we group, right? So if one has, if one's ending in 2031 and one's ending in 2033, that group has to go to 2031, right?
Now, the, the individual CFDs will have.
Now, the, the individual CFDs will have the same maturities.
Okay.
So they will, even if you're pooling together, for example, three different CFDs, uh, some mature in six years, seven years, eight years, they, they will maintain that same final maturity.
Okay. I think that's all I have for right now. I, I think that I, I like the three percent. But I do, I do agree that, that we should look at ones that may not be there. There's one that I can't talk about that, um, I hope my colleagues will look at closely, but, um.
Councilmember White, the last time we were here, just to, uh, give you, and I, I think the mayor reminder, the council said a dollar threshold as well.
Right, that's where I was going. I would, I.
So you could give us a three percent or a dollar threshold would be, would be okay. I think we've discussed that as a group that that might be a possibility for, for the council tonight.
Okay.
And it would apply to all CFDs, your recommendation or your.
I don't know. I, I look at some, I mean, I know the people in Tournament Hills are paying a lot more than the people in Three Rings. And so two hundred dollars to Tournament Hills payments aren't going to make, you know, it's going to be a different perspective than two hundred dollars to Three Rings. And I don't know that either of them are in here, but anyways, um, so yeah, I, I would, I would try and stick to the three percent, but I think you should bring back to us the ones that have at least a couple hundred dollars or more. And let us look at those closely.
And the market, as, as Mr. Jacob alluded to, the market will move. So something you see in here that's, you know, one point seven or two point seven might be a higher number when we come back.
Right.
Might be lower, just to set expectations, but what we, what we need though is, is Mr. Forbath kind of pointed out. We do need some specific guidance on the, the, a threshold that you want us to come back. So it could be three percent and a dollar amount that would probably satisfy what I think we're after tonight.
That's, for me right now, I'd wait to hear what everyone else says, but three percent and two hundred dollars, I want to look at them.
Okay.
So if I'm looking at this, the three percent then really only gives us three at this point.
Correct.
Okay, so we would be looking at Shadow Creek, Oak Valley and Four Seasons if we went with an NPV percentage of three, which that's the three percent we're talking about, correct? And just for my clarification, call premium, if it's at a hundred, when it says one hundred and three, is that three an additional year or is, what is the timeframe of that three?
Each year represents one. So it's the one oh three is a three-year.
Time frame. Okay, very good.
To get back to a hundred would take three years, yeah.
And by premium, it means what?
If you pay more to the investors to call.
Instead of paying a dollar, you pay a dollar three.
You pay them extra because they're lost of interest over the three-year period. They want more money in advance. Councilmember Finn?
Yes, thank you. So on the conversation of the escalate, the escalator, I'd, I'd love to see that go away too, especially when you're looking at years out. Whether base property taxes is going to go up two percent a year. So it's going to be really painful for somebody when you have those larger amounts in fifteen years from now. I do like the idea of maybe as soon as it hits par, you know, because then we would be looking at, for example, if we go just using the same one as seventeen C on page two thirty-eight, um, we would hit par on that in what, twenty twenty-nine? Correct? Because it's three years out?
Twenty twenty-eight.
Twenty, okay. So then I would certainly like to see that come back as a possibility to refinance that and pull that, that escalator off. Yes, it would be a little bit higher that first couple of years because it'll be like, as you said, twenty thirty-one or twenty thirty-two, then it's steady after that. So then the increases that they would see would be smaller than the initial two fifty-nine if it were done now, correct? Did I say that right?
No.
So if we did it, so if we, if we did it now, uh, in twenty twenty-six, their first year is two fifty-nine more, right?
That is correct.
In three years from now, if rates were the same in three years from now, when we're at par, then it's not going to be two fifty-nine that first year, it'll be a smaller amount, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Won't be paying the premium.
So I think it would be a good idea that we, once we hit par, maybe that's the time that we are pulling out these escalators.
Yeah. So Ca- Councilmember Finn, we have a, have a practice, we're always looking at these. We would come back to you sooner if it was more than three percent.
Gotcha, okay.
So if the rates moved down, we would go to your city manager, finance director and say, hey, rates are moving in the right direction. We think some of these that are callable can be done and we could, we've done them individually.
Okay, very nice.
We don't, they don't have to be as a group necessarily to move them forward.
Okay. And then I like the proposal on the percentage or the dollar amount. Um, you know, to set, set a, a limit. So for example, if we said three percent or let's say two hundred dollars, looking at the first one at Four Seasons at the top of the list, that's six point seven percent, but it's less than the two hundred dollars. So we would refinance that because it's more than the three percent, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then, then the same example. And this is Lloyd's neighborhood in Stetson, but I'm going to use it because it, it proves my point. It's a savings of two ninety-seven, but it's a two point seven percent. So if we said three, it wouldn't cover it on the percentage, but if we said two hundred, then it's covered there.
Correct.
Okay. So I, I like that idea, just maybe, and, and I know the recommendation was three percent, but does it make sense to go down to two and a half or, or do we think the dollar amount would make up for that?
We just use the GFOA best practices recommendation of three. The council can have its own perspective on how it wants to do that, but I, I think as professionals, that's kind of our guidance.
Okay. So as an initial agreement, I like, I like the three and the two hundred. So I'm good for now, thanks. Councilor Martinez?
Yeah. So along the same thing, I was looking at when it would make sense for, to go under three percent. Um, so that's just the guideline, is what you're saying overall. Um, is there any ever a point when we consider admin costs outweighing the, the actual savings? Or is that never approach because of the amount of?
By, by admin costs, are you referring to the cost to refinance?
Yes, yes.
They, these are all factored in already.
They're factored, okay. And I too, I like your idea with the escalator being at zero and then savings thereafter. Um, you know, I, I see both points where you're saving down the road, but you know, six, seven hundred dollars a, a, a year could be significant, especially for five years, um, to try to explain to the homeowner. So I think that approach of waiting to zero and then savings, I think makes more sense. I like that.
Mr. Martinez, when you say zero, that's at par, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, it means zero savings and then every year thereafter.
Right.
And, and Councilmember Martinez, I, I want to make sure that, um, that we're understanding, you know, the direction of the council. And I, maybe I, I just want to say this out loud, whatever guidance you give us tonight, doesn't have to be just for tonight. It could be, this council has this perspective on all these. If these are ever thresholds are met.
Right.
We, you know, this is when you'd want to see them come back. So it could be, you know, we could do this transaction before the, you know, the, the required time period to turn these in and come back to you six months later and say, well, rates have moved down and these three now work. I mean, that could be something that could happen.
I need just add one, one comment to, uh, Councilmember Martinez. When, when you talk about the cost of issuance, that's sort of baked into how the GFOA came up with a three percent threshold is to, is to say that three percent savings threshold is sort of important to make sure that people aren't doing the deals just to get paid, right? And so that, that's sort of baked into the GFA FOA process to, to, to say that three percent. So a- a- again, I, I think what, what we've heard from you all, because I, I'm going to be the one who has to write this in the resolution that comes back to you, um, is so far and, and i- is three percent threshold savings. The, uh, would be, I guess it would be the greater of three percent or two hundred dollar savings. And I guess the question is on that two hundred dollar savings, do you want to put a floor on that in terms of the net present value savings overall or not? If anything is over two hundred dollars, we're going to do it. Or do you want a floor of say, it, it's gotta, it's gotta be at least two percent savings or one and a half percent savings or something in order to move forward and do it?
You know, I, I had another thought. I know this make it more difficult, but if I'm paying eight thousand a year in CFDs, two hundred dollar savings doesn't mean as much to me as if I'm paying three thousand a year. Is there a way we could also tie that in to say, yeah, we, we want to save you two hundred dollars, but we don't want to save you two hundred dollars if.
That's, that's the net present value savings is how you sort of get there on that, I, I think is, you know, based on. Well, I mean, a lot of it.
That's the three percent you're talking about.
Yeah. Not, not always, but yes. They're bigger deals, so. Again, again, we're, we're, we're seeking for a direction to come back to you because what, what we're going to do is we will be pulling together a package of CFDs that are going to be in a pool together in order to sort of achieve economies of scale. And we're going to pack this together. We're going to have a rating agency presentation to get a rating and get bond insurance. And so it'll be a, a, a package of, of CFDs. If some of them fall out of the money for whatever reason, we'll pull them out, but it gets cumbersome. If, if things are right on the cusp at some level, at some point, we kind of need to know if they're going to be in or out. And so I think we're looking for sort of clear direction, what the parameters are. And if things are on the cusp of the lower end, likely unless the market moves before we come back to you, they probably won't be included in what we come back to you with.
So you want to, I'm just asking, is you want a percentage and a dollar? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, I, I, I think whatever you all are comfortable with, a percentage and a dollar or, you know, whatever, whatever you want, if you want a floor or not.
It, it sounds like we're at, um, when the savings is zero for the first year, we're looking at that, right? And then three percent two hundred dollar savings.
Okay.
Um, Lloyd, would, would a floor of two point seven percent cover your? That cover Councilmember White's concern?
Floor of two point seven would be pretty like right on the cusp of the three percent. So yeah, I mean, whatever, whatever floor you, you would like. I, I guess I'm just looking just on this list by way of example, just Tournament Hills, which I don't believe any of you live in, right? Nobody says anybody live in Tournament Hills. That is a one point four percent, but it's only two hundred and twenty, but it is two hundred and twenty-five dollars of savings. And that's a one oh three, next year will be one oh two, the following year will be one oh one, then a hundred. So I, I guess it's just the question is, is.
Do we need a floor?
Uh, you don't need a floor.
Are we good without a floor?
Well, and Mr. Mayor, so in that example, Brian, this is seventeen C that we were talking about with that escalator. So should we decide to wait till it hits par? Even if it meets those numbers that we were talking about, we probably will, would wait anyway until it hits par and then do it.
Right, right.
Okay, all right, I got you.
Just to be clear, same thing on the other one too, right?
Okay.
Eight, on eight, AD, the same thing. We don't, we want to wait six years. Well.
Okay. So can I, can I say back what I think the recommendation is? I hear it and then you, you all can correct me. Uh, three percent savings, two hundred dollars. If it's an escalator, we're only going to do the escalator if it can level it out. So it's zero dis savings in year one.
Yes.
Yes. We're only going to remove the escalator.
We're only going to remove. But I, I guess the question is, would we, would you like us to move forward on the refunding without removing the, the escalator if it meets, okay?
Mr. Mayor, can I add to that? So the question about the zero savings year one, I think if it makes sense, if they have one year, if it's going to be a little bit more, then maybe you look at it sooner. So I would leave that open and not necessarily be a hard decision on an escalator one. Let's look at that every year that, or every time it's, you know.
But I think they want the direction so that they can move forward.
I want direction at least for this pool right now. We could talk about next year when we come back to you right, right now, but like
Oh, I got you, okay.
At least for, you know, the two with the escalators that we're talking about, which would be the Sundance seventeen C and the eight D.
So the eight, so the eight D is under the three percent and under the two hundred. So that would, we wouldn't consider that now.
Yes.
But in the seventeen C, under the three, I lost.
Under the three percent.
Under the three percent, but over the two hundred.
Right.
But we're three percent over par, right?
It's a one oh three call premium.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
One oh three call premium, yes.
Okay.
And if it had a premium on it, that's what Mike was mentioning earlier.
Yes.
There was an escalator, right?
But then looking at that escalator, then at seventeen C, that's the example that we spoke about with it being year one two hundred and fifty-nine dollars more, but year two, it's a little less than that, right? On the, on the, the difference.
Yeah, year two, now, if we go to, if everything, nothing else changes, interest rates are the same today as they are next year, it'll be more efficient at a one oh two premium than a one oh three premium. I don't know if that's going to eliminate the escalator or not, but yeah.
Can you re-clarify the ten-year comment that you made? When you said refinance.
So when we go to issue, when, when we go to refund these bonds today, they're not going to be callable likely for another ten-year period.
Okay.
It may, they might be callable at one oh three in year seven, but they're not going to be callable till par, till, till.
So you do it now, then you're locked.
So you're, you're locking it out. So we're, you're using your opportunity today on, on, on this, so.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Yeah.
Fair for Tim White?
So would the, speaking to all of us up here, would the council ever consider just going with those that are at a hundred percent premium then? To get rid of those that are the one oh threes that are potentially callable now, give them the direction that says, hey, moving forward, these are still within the callable range, but we're only looking at those that are a hundred percent called for now.
You know, I think he said they're going to do that anyways. I mean, whatever ones we don't choose to do this time, they're going to keep an eye on, right? We're going to watch that year or as interest rates change. But my question to you is on these eight, on these escalators, eight D, I would really like to know seven, especially seventeen C. We know it's twelve ninety-five dis savings the first four years. That's what we calculated up here.
Might be a little.
We're real smart.
Mr. White, it would be less than that. It's two fifty-nine the first year, the next year it's a little smaller, the next year it's a little smaller.
I know we, we added them up over here.
Yeah, but it's not completely. He's right. It does kind of shrink over to.
Besides, I mean, we're, let's not focus. What I'm trying to get to is if whatever that red number is, let's go with a thousand dollars. If, if the savings after year four is fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, I think we need to take that into account. Because we're, we're looking at this and saying, well, maybe three years from now, when the par is, when it's at par or we're close to par, then we would pull the trigger then, but interest rates could go up. And if, if, if it's one thousand to twenty thousand, that's, you know, twenty, twenty to one savings that they may not get if interest rates don't go the right way. I would like to know what, what those numbers are. I don't know if it's going to be as significant. It, I think it looks pretty significant for AD also. You understand what I'm saying?
And, and if I could add to that comment, I'm okay for a little little bit of pain now, but the, the savings are, are humongous down the road.
And I think all you're asking for us tonight is which ones you can bring back to us to let us make a decision on.
Yeah.
So once we know about, I think you should look at those two also. And just let us know what those numbers are.
Okay. We can work through city staff.
Okay.
And they'll give us some guidance a little further as we do the math that you're asking for. We can dig into it a little bit more. I think there's a couple of things we could look at here to address your, your questions and city staff can give us some guidance.
I know that this is a stupid question. Well, there's no way we can pull the homeowners.
No. But I don't think we have time.
But even if we had time, there, you can't really do that, can you? I think politically it's, you're going to get people who say don't, don't raise it and then we raise it and they're going to be upset with us.
I think that's what we're asking is how do we, how do we discuss a short-term pain for a long-term gain?
So I, 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 I just tell you, I've, I've, um, been a bond lawyer since nineteen ninety-nine and I've done I hundreds of CFD refundings. And I can tell you in all honesty that I'm not aware of a situation where councils actually raised rates even in the first year or two in a refunding scenario. I, I, I've just, just based on my own experience of what I've seen out there in the marketplace, just because of I, I think, you know, Mr. Finn, you're a real estate broker. I think people think that the average homeowner changes homes every seven years. And the fact that you're going to raise, potentially raise taxes on somebody for the first four or five years, and then they're only going to get two years of savings out of that and then they're gone. So I, I think that's been my experience with a lot of guys. These are difficult decisions. I'm not saying that's right or wrong, but I just tell you what I've seen in, in, in most jurisdictions.
I appreciate the insight. Thank you.
And, and I'm okay with starting, making sure that the first year has yeah, close to zero. I mean, what if it's?
Yeah, close to, close to.
Yeah. No, no dis savings in year two.
Okay. So can we just say this back again, just to. So I go, I go, I go, I gotta write this and maybe I'll watch the video. Okay. Three percent savings, two hundred dollars. If there's an escalator, um, we just need to make sure that there's minimal dis savings in year one and no dis savings after year two. Okay. Okay. I think we have it.
Okay.
We'll try not to screw it up. But so we'll, we'll bring it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else on? Yeah. Anything else on, we had the other one to talk about. Yeah, I want to say one other thing. So we, um, again, what's driving this process is the timeline. And so to get back to you on some of these, I think the only other opportunity we may have is when we present it to you and say, okay, here's what we've looked at. Um, and as you're aware, with each of these transactions, there's a good faith estimate that we put together on what we think the interest rates we, and the savings will be. So we'll come back and we'll have all that in here. If something changes in the market after that, it, we, we won't be able to respond to it. Um, if something changes in the market where one falls out, it will let, it'll just fall out. If the market moves the other way, we won't have an opportunity to move one in. Um, so the timeline is really important to that process. And there's one other thing I want to, I want to brief you on, not related to this, but it is related to timeline. Um, and I've only briefly mentioned it, um, to the staff, and we have not talked much about it, but I want to let you be aware of it. Last week, I got an email from a developer's rep for CFD 23-1 in Fairway Canyon. It's the D.R. Horton and Meritage Development. It's about 419 units. They've pulled all the permits. They're going to have every house sold by the end of May or June. Told us kind of late. The only way we can get that done before the tax roll hits, where we can actually lower the tax, because if we don't get it done, they're going to pay the maximum tax rate for a year. We'd have to bring it back to you as an opportunity to issue the bonds. And I know that's not something we brought up the last time. And it's separate, but I just want to let you know that that is one hanging out there, and this council's always been sensitive to setting the rates and trying to bring them in as low as we can. So I'm just letting you know that this came late. Unusual for the developer to wait this long. They can actually ask anytime they want for us to issue the bonds. Unusual for someone to wait till all the permits are pulled and almost all the houses are sold to do it, but it just happened. So we'll, we'll work with your staff.
So this would be a first issuance?
It would be. And, and, and normally I wouldn't bring it up to you at all. But I know you guys don't want to have the maximum tax rate for these residents for a year. And I think we can probably get it done in time, and we'd have to close it by around July or sell the bonds in by July. So Mr. Spicer can put the tax rates on the assessor roll at the lower amount. So that's just something separate than this, but let you know that it may be something that's forthcoming. Um, and we were told about it about five or six days ago.
Mayor, can I ask a question? So Michael, just confirming what you're saying is 23, 2023-01 was not on that list that council approved? That's, that's why Michael's bringing it up.
And it's a, a D.R. Horton and Meritage.
Last council meeting, there was a list.
Yeah, that's why I'm bringing it up, because we're talking about timing and giving everything done and, and setting rates. And I, I would really have to hate to come back to you in August, September and say, oh, here's a new transaction. Oh, by the way, we missed the whole roll by a month. I know that's not something this council desires.
The concern that I have is we can't just keep adding these CFDs to the list that we have already approved is the concern that I have.
Understood.
Transparency.
Understood.
So they've sold all the houses?
Almost all of them have been conveyed. I asked for the absorption list. They said by May, but all the permits have been pulled and I've verified it. That's the first thing I did is verified all the permits have been pulled.
Okay, but they haven't been charged, there haven't been any mortgages yet, correct?
Oh, they probably have been by now, yeah, because there's 419 units and almost all of them have been conveyed.
Do we know what they're paying now?
Chain might have the maximum tax rate of what would be charged, yeah.
Because that was just really an estimate when.
Are we allowed to get into this? Because it's not on.
Yeah, I was just going to weigh in on this, that this is, this item is really about refunding outstanding CFD bonds. And, um, Mr. Bush providing that information for informational purposes is fine.
Okay.
But I think that we ought to cut it off at this point.
Okay. So you have the direction that you need on J2?
We can talk about this on the next agenda, correct? You don't need to come back, though?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I believe we have it.
Okay. So, um, J3, approval of an amendment to the acquisition agreement for Community Facilities District 2016-3, and authorization of issuance of its special tax bonds, Series 2025.
Good evening, Mayor Lara, Councilmember Brian Forbath, Stradling again. Thank you, this one, um, this one should look rather familiar to you. This is for, um, forgive me, how do I, oh, there we go. This one is for CFD 2016-3, which was a TriPoint development. It's their age-restricted 55 and over community known as Altus Beaumont. We, the city council approved the first series of issuance of bonds back in 2023 for about $8 million at that point in time. The CFD is part of the Sundance Master Plan Community. It has 704 parcels in it. As of January 17th, 556 of those homes had been completed, sold and conveyed to individual homeowners. There was 11 completed model homes owned by the developer, an additional 40 homes under construction, and 97 finished lots. And TriPoint says they expect to, uh, complete and convey all the remaining homes, individual homeowners by the second quarter of 2026, so about a year from now. We're here before you, a-again, this was, um, I'll get, talk about in a second, is part of the, the party settlement that we, the city entered into several years ago. This is really the last piece of that. The action before you tonight is to approve and not to exceed 7.5 million dollars of bonds. And, uh, you know, these bonds were, are structured to provide 110% coverage based on the special taxes that are being levied in there. Um, the bond proceeds are going to finance the acquisition of, uh, certain public improvements and pay for certain development impact fees. Again, just a reminder, and I know we've gone over this several times now, but party now, TriPoint and the city entered into, um, development agreements for Sundance and Tournament Hills, uh, required the city to form CFDs to finance facilities and fees on their behalf. Yeah, back in 2017, there was a variety of disputes amongst the parties, and there was a settlement that was entered into at that time that, um, resolved all of those issues. And part of it was to form this CFD 2016-3 on behalf of party and ultimately issue bonds when it was ready to do so. The actions before you tonight are the approval, there's two actions you're acting, one, as the legislative body of the Community Facilities District to approve the issuance of the bonds and an amendment to the existing acquisition agreement. And then there's also a separate resolution where you are wearing the hat of just the city council to approve, uh, the acquisition agreement itself. The acquisition agreement is a dual party between the CFD, the city and the developer, I'm sorry, tri-party agreement, forgive me. And so that's, again, you know, part of what we've always talked about here is the SEC compliance that we, we need to enter into as part of the settlement with the SEC and cease and desist order. Beaumont Financing Authority, um, the city entered into, adopted a disclosure policy. That disclosure policy requires a thorough review of the official statement, a page turner of the official statement, annual training with city staff, which we do, um, and that's all been done and completed. So that, again, the items before you tonight are the city resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds, not to exceed 7.5 million dollars, approving a preliminary official statement, a first supplement to the bond indenture, a bond purchase agreement with Stifel Nicolaus, continuing disclosure agreement, hiring the financing team and compliance, uh, you know, the good faith estimates are attached as well. And then again, there's the city resolution that approves the First Amendment to the acquisition agreement. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tom to talk about some of the, just the details on the financing structure.
And before you go.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Can you just, um, define what an acquisition agreement?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, forgive me. So the acquisition agreement is the agreement pursuant to which the city agrees to acquire from the developer completed facilities with bond, with the proceeds of the bonds, or to reimburse the developer for development impact fees that were paid, um, with bond, reimburse them with bond proceeds. And then the city then agrees to spend those bond proceeds on, uh, public facilities that would be constructed from the DIF program.
So what are we actually amending in?
So there's a, there's a, a list of facilities that's attached to the back of the acquisition agreement. There's some minor amendments to it. Let me just grab, forgive me, Councilman White, I have it here in, in my stack.
This is J3, right?
I believe it's on page 509 of our agenda packet.
Yes, so forgive me. Uh, in the back of the list, there was, I believe, the specific amendments, which we've discussed with city staff, related to the storm drainage and sewer improvements for Tournament Hills. And then it was also, I believe, some additional improvement costs to Brookside Avenue, I believe, were the, the provisions that have been amended, amended, or added, I should say.
And what, what part of Brookside? Is that, um, John, if, if it's close to my house, my house backs up to Brookside, but Brookside's a really long street, so I don't know.
It, I believe it's, I, you know, I, I don't, I don't want to speak because I'm not 100% censored. At one point, I, I believe it was the corner towards, this Brookside is the one that runs parallel, runs towards Banning. And yeah, I, I believe it's that strip that the city was discussing about the telephone poles and the.
Between Cherry, Cherry Avenue, oh, way down there?
Yeah, I believe, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
If it's that area, then it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be close to your home.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm sorry I didn't have the answers at the top of my head.
Then Tom.
Good evening again, Councilmembers, Tom Jacob from Stifel. And so I have, um, some just basic facts about the financing. These statistics are based on market conditions in late February. They're a little bit different as of today, but not too far off. So, um, I know Brian had mentioned, uh, a not to exceed par amount of 7.5 million, uh, but in reality, if we were to go to market, the par amount would be much lower, at about 6.6 million dollars. Uh, the true interest cost, which is essentially the average borrowing cost over a 30-year period, is just shy of 5%. Uh, again, this is a, a 30-year, uh, final maturity, uh, with, uh, the final maturity being September 1st of 2055. Uh, because this is a parity issuance to the outstanding 2023, uh, tax, special tax bonds. Uh, the special taxes collected will provide, uh, 10% coverage over both the 23 bonds and the 2025 bonds. And as you can see in the graphic here, uh, this is level, aggregate level debt service, so there are no escalators, uh, over time. Uh, on this slide, we have the estimated costs of issuance. Uh, we always try to be in line, uh, with what is currently out there and, and of course, be in line with past, uh, transactions that we've completed for the city. Uh, in total, uh, the estimated costs are just under 290,000. You can see in the sub-bullet point there, uh, a more recent transaction, uh, for Sundance, uh, the parity issuance was just over $300,000. So a little bit lower, uh, in the estimated cost of issuance. And last but not least, we have the tentative schedule, assuming council approves the transaction this evening. Um, our job at Stifel, um, along with Brian, is to post the preliminary official statement or the offering perspectives to, uh, prospective investors. Uh, we will then market, uh, the transaction and the credit, uh, to investors and look to price the bonds, uh, as early as mid to late next week. Uh, and then have a closing period of a couple of weeks to finalize all of the legal documents. Uh, and then look to, uh, have a settlement date or the date of issuance of the 2025, 2025 bonds, a couple of weeks way later during the week of April 7th. And so with that, uh, I and the rest of the financing team are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Nicole, do we have any public comment?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Okay, I'll open it up for council comments. Promotion.
All right, I will move to waive, as long as there's no other comments. All right, to waive the full reading and adopt by title only a resolution of the city, uh, City Council, the City of Beaumont, acting as the legislative body of the City of Beaumont Community Facilities District, number 2016-3, authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds, Series 2025, in a principal amount not to exceed 7.5 million and approving certain documents and taking certain other actions in connection therewith. And two, to adopt a resolution of the city council, the City of Banning approving this First Amendment to the acquisition agreement.
You said banning. We're in Beaumont.
Sorry. What did I say?
You said banning.
Oh, my goodness. Let's try that again. Adopt a resolution of the City Council, the City of Beaumont approving First Amendment to the acquisition agreement.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Podzen Boyd?
Yes.
Mayor Lara?
Yes. That brings us to item J4, Sales Tax Working Group Update and Recommended Next Steps for Fiscal Sustainability Planning. The, Mr. Jeffrey Stacey.
Thank you.
Volunteer of the Year.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to provide an update on the League of California Cities Sales Tax Working Group and its potential impact on Beaumont's sales tax revenues, particularly regarding e-commerce sales tax allocation changes. The Sales Tax Working Group was established to review how e-commerce sales tax is distributed across cities. And currently, much of this tax is allocated to cities with fulfillment centers like Beaumont. However, new recommendations propose shifting portions of the Bradley Burns 1% local sales tax to destination city where the goods are delivered. Proposed changes include, um, in-state e-commerce sales tax, sales tax would be split 50/50, 50%, 50% between the point of sale, fulfillment center, and the delivery city, instead of being fully allocated to the fulfillment center. And a five-year transition period would be implemented once the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, the CDTFA, finalizes the necessary system changes. Out-of-state e-commerce sales tax, instead of being pooled at the county level, 100% of this tax would go directly to the destination city. Um, on sales tax sharing agreements, future agreements would be capped at 50% of the revenue generated and limited to 20 years. Um, some policy adjustments that have been made, as cities must now report all sales tax sharing agreements to CDTFA, and that's beginning in April of this year. And county pool calculations will be adjusted to deduct rebates to private businesses before tax distributions. The working group recommendations must go through the CalCities Policy Development Process, which includes review and vote by the Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee and consideration and action by the CalCities Board of Directors. If approved, any changes to sales tax allocation would likely require a constitutional amendment. And this means either legislation would need to pass through the state legislature or a ballot initiative will require signature collection to qualify for a statewide vote. In either case, the final decision would rest with California voters, making this a lengthy and uncertain process with potential fiscal impacts on Beaumont. Potential, um, financial impact of Beaumont is, sales tax is our largest revenue source. If these changes are approved, Beaumont could see a revenue decline. The amount of that decline is unknown, but a quick analysis from fiscal year '24 sales tax that was collected points to a potential 9.4 million annually. The city must proactively plan for potential revenue losses and identify alternative revenue sources to maintain fiscal stability. To address these challenges, staff recommends engaging a consultant to assist with financial planning, public education, and advocacy efforts. And this process would unfold in three phases. Uh, phase one would, um, include research, and that's conduct financial impact assessments and identify revenue generating options. Phase two would be an outreach and educate the public through community meetings and materials and gather feedback from residents. And phase three would be post-referral, and this is if a revenue, uh, measure is proposed. And that's provide legally permissible public education materials. Staff recommends, starting with phase one, the research phase, followed by report back to city council. City council can then direct staff on whether or not to continue with the additional phases. For final considerations, uh, the estimated cost for the consulting effort is for phase one is $16,500. And for all phases, uh, amount not to exceed of around $82,500. And this investment would support Beaumont's ability to navigate legislative changes, advocate for fair sales tax policies, and explore revenue alternatives. So the recommended action in your staff report is to receive and file this update on the Sales Tax Working Group and discuss some. And discuss and provide direction to staff on engaging consultant for revenue strategy planning. Given the potential fiscal impact and the lengthy policy approval process. It is critical that Beaumont begins proactive planning now to protect our long term financial sustainability. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Nicole, do we have any public comments on this side?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Okay, I'll open it up for council discussion. Mayor Potem Boyt?
Yeah, I just have one quick question. CTDFA, I'm assuming it's California Tax Something Financial Authority, but California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. Okay, fee administration. That's all I have for now.
Okay. Councilmember White?
So so the way I understand the. The proposal or what California Cities is is suggesting or. Arguing for is. Instead of us getting point of sale, a hundred percent of the sales tax revenue that's coming from Amazon over south of the sixty. We will now get fifty percent. For anything that's sold outside of the city, anything sold in the side, inside, we get a hundred percent, correct?
That would be correct.
Okay. What is the legislative status of this legislature status? Do we know where it is? I mean, have the is. What I'm asking you is, is this an improvement over what the state wants to do? Is CalCities arguing for an improvement over what the state wants to do?
So CalCities is in the process of educating. They will have to go through their two committees. The Revenue Committee, and then it will have to go their Board of Directors. If it gets approved them, but Board of Directors, it becomes a CalCities policy. And then at that point, they would advocate legislation.
Okay. But is my understanding, there's actual legislation going through right now, correct? Or no?
No, not 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 yet.
Okay. Okay, this is my problem with CalCities. Once again. They're they're arguing for. Policy that significantly favors the large cities in our state. And again, a one for all. You know, if we sell into LA or San Diego, I don't know that we would. I'm sure there's Amazons closer than that, but. They're not paying fifty percent of our infrastructure that we've that we've decided to commit to. I think that we should draft a letter to CalCities and tell them that we're not, we're not on board with this. I just think it's, I think it's a bad idea. So I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, for for John, for Mr. Peatney. Just a little background of the of the law. So I was researching the Sales Tax Act. The Bradley Burns Sales Tax, and in there, there shows a proposition. That gave us, that prohibited the state from adjusting the tax allocation. Back on Proposition Twenty Two. Was there something that changed where the state now has the authority to reallocate? Or is that what the whole procedure going forward is to do in a constitutional amendment or legislative act to?
I think that's what's being debated now.
Is that what is that where we're at? Because, okay, because I agree with Councilmember White, it's absolutely ludicrous. That CalCities is supposed to be supporting all of CalCities is actually stabbing the little cities in the back. It's absolutely unbearable. I'm just, I'm so beside myself. I think we should even do more than than just write a letter to to CalCities. I mean, I'd like to pull out. That's absolutely ridiculous. I'm upset because when we talk about our, you know, possible. Revenue, I mean, we're looking at possible revenue sources to to, you know, compensate what we're going to lose. But no one's talking about the legality. Just like Councilmember White said, we put in the infrastructure, we had to sell it to our public, we have to deal with the roads, we have to deal with the smog. And our residents were able to say, okay, we'll do that because we're going to get this in exchange. And that was the whole idea that we pushed forward with these big projects. And now the city has to sit there and and deal with. Sharing revenue costs when it clearly states in the in the sales tax that the origin comes from the city itself. It says that right there. So, you know, it it upsets me because the cities coming in now are not dealing with what we have to deal with. As far as all of the things I mentioned from infrastructure to to smog and so forth. And to get a piece of that, I think is just outrageous. It really is. So I would like to talk more about taking a stronger approach to 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 voice our concern. And I'd also like to even think about going one step further. I'd like to look at getting a consortium of all the small cities that this could affect. And writing a letter as one voice and even seeing what legal we can get behind it. Now, I know it's a little premature because we don't know where we're going, but I think it's something we ought to think about. Because, you know, if CalCities is not going to voice for the smaller cities, medium cities, then we have to start voicing for ourselves. So that's where I am on this, and I know we're still kind of in the in the in the roads with that, but. It just to me for for an organization that's supposed to look at everybody in general. I think that is definitely favoring, of course, the larger cities. And I just, I it'll, it's going to really damage our residents, and when we get to that discussion, you'll see what we're talking about. And and I have no problem with the the, I know the residents will get behind that. So that's that's my comment for now. I'm a little heated, but thank you, mayor.
May I talk about? Sure. So first of all, I'm, I know this, the bigger part of this item is moving forward with your phase one, two and three. I'm good with that. Okay, I think I think we need to do that. What about sending a letter to Cal? Let's find out all the cities that have Amazons. And then let's send a letter to CalCities and CC all of those cities. And then follow up with those cities. I mean, that might be a way to start this. But I think every time CalCities. Goes and and proposes something to the state, it always benefits the LA, San Francisco, San Diego. Does not benefit Beaumont.
Do we have consensus today?
Definitely have consensus.
Yes, sir. Just to confirm, so we're going to draft a letter.
Yeah, let me oppose.
To CalCities and copy all the cities with Amazons.
Or or I know maybe better to. Send a letter to all the cities and copy CalCities. I don't know. There's two different approaches we could go. Tell the other cities that.
Oh, our consultant can probably help with that campaign. I mean, this is a legislative thing.
Oh, our lobbyists.
Yeah, I love you.
Do we want to look at the size of the city? Because if, I mean, you sent it to LA, like you were saying, the larger cities are going to benefit.
Well, LA is still losing fifty percent of their money.
Going to lose anyone that has ones in half of their revenue.
I'm sure there's, I'm sure they're fifty percent they're losing.
Is one of them.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
I'm sure they're fifty percent they're losing is a lot more than the fifty percent that that.
Then I would suggest that we sent it to CalCities and the the cities that have Amazon.
Yes.
And copy or?
Yes, yes, all the Amazon cities, yeah.
All the Amazons. Now, does this, could this extend beyond just Amazon? I mean.
Yeah, the good question. Are there other logistics?
Any logistics? Any logistics that sells that has the point of sale or the? Okay.
Yes, e-commerce.
E-commerce.
Thank you.
But I think at least it gets the the word out there, maybe some headlines in the paper.
The entire state of California.
Yes.
Yeah.
So there's another part to the item that's before you, though.
And that I think.
Was, you know, that's assuming that you're success, you might be successful in that effort. But if you're not, the second part of this was to give direction to staff on engaging consultant to assist in determining cities' options for revenue strategies.
Yeah, I'm just with that.
Same here.
We have to look at options, so I would support looking at, starting with phase one. Doing the, starting the research so that.
Just one or all of them?
Just the, just the.
Just one.
Okay.
Yes, just.
Yes, sir.
So we'll look at phase one, and then we'll bring it back for council discussion.
Yeah, because I think that that will be helpful in kind of guidance. You know, the other concern that I have is when we're looking at. Any of these new. Proposals for. Warehouse projects. Will we make? Before it was easier to make the decision, you had the guidance set, okay, well, this could be a financial benefit to the city. And you look at the long game, but now we won't, we won't know and. So I think maybe in in phase one. Could we also look at a potential fee to help cover our? The cost of maintenance on the wear and tear of the streets? If that's feasible? If council's okay with that?
Yeah, I think phase one would include looking at all all revenue options.
Thank you. This is the direction. You you have, are you good on the recommended?
I think I think we're good.
You're good? Okay. Okay, that brings us to item J five, sponsorship request for the twenty twenty five Cherry Festival by the Cherry Festival Association. That report?
Thank you, mayor, that's me. So the item that you have before you is a sponsorship request received from the Cherry Festival Association. In an amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the twenty twenty five Cherry Festival, which starts May twenty ninth of this year. The breakdown is a hundred and thirty five thousand for one day of free admission. On Thursday, as well as reduced tickets for Friday through Sunday benefiting local families. A hundred thousand to enhance the entertain entertainment lineup, maintaining the festival's reputation and appeal. Sixty five thousand for community scholarships and donations to. Various programs and businesses, and then finally fifty thousand for operational expenses, including sec- security. The audit is attached in your packet, and since twenty twenty two, City Council has requested that the Cherry Festival. Perform an audit, and they have done so again this year. The audit shows that the CFA has net assets of three hundred and thirty seven thousand six dollars for the year ending. December thirty first, twenty twenty four, their their audit is on a calendar year. And the balance after. This balance is after a net loss of two hundred and twenty five thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. There were no reportable findings. Should. Council approve. The amount of a hundred thousand that is in the budget. However, if council approves three hundred and fifty thousand, we would need to bring it back a budget amendment for that. And that would come out of your. Fund balance. You do not have enough in your unprogrammed revenues to cover the excess. So with that, I am recommending that council authorize a hundred and thirty five thousand to sponsor the Cherry Festival and cover the cost of providing the one. Day of free admission, as well as reduce ticket prices for the remainder of the festival. And I've listed the two GL codes. The first one is the budgeted a hundred thousand that's already in your budget. The balance of thirty five thousand would come out of the city manager's contingency, therefore avoiding using. Your fund balance or your savings account. And with that, I'm available for any questions. The Cherry Festival Association is also here in the audience.
Thank you. Nicole, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Okay, I'll open it up for council discussion. Councilmember White?
How did we come? So the one thirty five, your, the staff recommendation of one thirty five is based on the the. Estimate of a hundred and thirty five is what it would provide for free admission, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And in the in the conversations that you've had. With the. Cherry Festival Association and the Parks District. Is that where these? Where this idea came from was the discussion of that?
The the one meeting that I did have with the Cherry Festival, the Park District was present. And there was talk about the hundred thousand and what that could go for, and. The discussion led to, is it possible for more? And I said, well, if if you have a plan in place, please bring that forward.
Okay. Because my thought is, if it if it's three hundred and fifty thousand sponsorship annually. And and that is what is required to make sure the Cherry Festival continues. I'd have a concern about that. But I met with. Mr. Roush. And then. Please. Yeah, I told you I don't remember names very well.
Hi, I'm Ariana.
And you're the treasurer, right?
The treasurer.
Okay. And I I just think that this needs some better fine tuning and some some new ideas. Because here's my my thinking. First of all, my understanding is Parks District is raising the rent from twenty five thousand to fifty thousand. That's a significant challenge for the Cherry Festival to to agree with or to move forward on. And so my thought is, I'd like to know from the Parks District why you are going from twenty five to fifty. I think the best way we would move forward on this is to. Sit down with. The Cherry Festival. And the Parks District and the city and and brainstorm and come up with some better ideas, and and I'll throw out some ideas that I have real quick. I think we could benefit, that Cherry Festival would benefit a lot. First of all, let me ask a a legal question. If we provide free. Admission. Or if the Cherry Festival uses our hundred and thirty five thousand to provide free admission on Thursday. Is it a problem that some people outside of Beaumont are going to get that free admission? It's not a gift of public funds or anything like that?
I don't think so. I think there's a benefit, a public benefit to the city, and if the city determines there's a public benefit because it provides. Economic development, it encourages economic activity, it provides primarily entertainment to people within the city. And whatever else the council determines. This would benefit the city with, then it's unlikely that that determination by the council would be overturned by a court or.
Okay. The reason we originally, before the hundred thousand, we were not. Contributing other than we're waiving fire and other services. So we decide, but we, I think when we decided to to up it to a hundred thousand, it was, it was because we wanted to see the entertainment improved. So we were, in my mind, we were thinking that hundred thousand is going to go directly to entertainment. And so we should see an improvement of entertainment. And I'm not sure that we saw that, and I think that was one of my concerns early on was that we weren't getting. The improvement in the entertainment. I I think the way I put, the way I look at it is, we used to have this, the summer concert series. And we were, obviously, we had to drop that when we were near bankruptcy. And then we went forward and didn't do it for a while, and then we brought back and tried one concert, and that didn't didn't go over really well. But we wanted to get back to that, and and my thought of the hundred thousand for entertainment was the idea. That could sort of replace the kinds of, the quality of entertainment we were getting during the summer. And especially now that we're going to Beaumont Nights, which is a little bit, a little bit different type of event. But I think I would still like to to make sure a hundred thousand dollars go into the entertainment. But I would, I would think we'd have, I think we'd all benefit better with an idea of. Waiving our fees. To our PIO. And put money into advertising. And I know that last year you guys advertised on the billboards limited. But I think. That would be a better, you know, you increase the revenue that way. And it also gives us more visibility as a city as well. So I, but I, in the long run, I would like to. And is to, I think I asked you last night. If we wait to make this decision in the next council meeting, it doesn't put you in a bind as far as your timing goes, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I I think there needs to be more talk. I would love to be involved in these conversations, especially since I am the. Cherry Festival liaison for the council. I was surprised when this come out, came out. I mean, I knew about it because you you sent it to us early as as, you sent it to me as. The. The liaison, but I think we need to get together because we need to put together some kind of an agreement that we're not doing this every year. You know, that we agree with the Parks District. First question we have to ask Park District is, do you want to keep doing this? And if they don't, then we got to start looking in other ways. If they do, then we've got to work together with them to continue to make this this happen. I guess that's, I've spoken enough on that. Thanks.
Councilmember Martinez?
Oh, yeah, thank you, mayor. Yeah, so when I saw the the price tag, I was a bit thrown back on that. So it is a tough sell with that big of a number. I'm not. I'm not very supportive of the sixty five for the sixty five thousand for the community scholarships. I don't think that's a part of your vision. So I have a tough sell on that, and I have a tough sell on the price. In order to to get my further support. In order to, to get my further support, what I'd really like to see is a little bit more of a breakdown on the revenue. I'd like to see what you're getting in from sponsorships, uh, and see who else is out there putting in numbers. We have a lot of, lot of commercial in our, around our area. And, you know, to, to come up with that big of a number, I, I ask myself, you know, what are other entities doing? So I think it's only fair for our taxpayers that they're assured that there's money coming in from other resource, uh, resources for, um, sponsorships and stuff besides just the city. So I'd like to see that come back. I agree 100% on your idea about discussion, uh, Councilmember White. I think that's the first step to go back to the drawing board table and kind of like we did last time and, and kind of hammer out and iron out some, some things here. Our direction, our vision, there's a lot of stuff here that, that comes in question now, uh, when I see that big of a number and I see, well, what's, what might, you know, what outcome is there? How did we get to this point? So, um, so I'd like to see a little bit more of a revenue breakdown. Uh, again, the 65 for the community scholarships, I'm not too supportive. And I'm not supportive because, remember, I'm looking at it from the taxpayer point of view. The taxpayers, this is their money. This is not just a city, it's the taxpayers' money that they're putting into it. So if I'm going to say, okay, we allocate 65,000, where's that going? You know, what, what, who's this scholarship going to and, and how did, was that determined? And how can I assure equity? And how can I assure all of that when the taxpayers in general are going, are, are footing that bill? So, you know, those are the type of questions I bring up. So it's not the fact that I don't support organizations, it's the fact that I have to be a keeper of the money, and I have to be accountable to my constituents. You as well, is, uh, if I'm going to approve this, I have to be assured that it's going to the proper place. So that's, I'd like to see more of a breakdown on the revenue. I'm a little bit more of a supporter of paying for things directly. So if we're like paying for entertainment, then we write the check to the entertainment group or company. If it comes up to where we might cover the 50,000 from the parks, then we write the check to the parks. And I think that's a little bit more accountable to our residents as well, so they see exactly where our money's going, rather than just here's the number and, you know, do with it as you will. So I think it has to all do with accountability and transparency when it comes to our taxpayers. But I do love the free day. I know it's a smaller day, so Thursday is usually what, a five to 10? So and it's like a five hour day, so I know that's a free day, but it's not a full day. So I don't want to mis, misinterpret that as a full day of admission. It's a shorter day. It's usually our lower, I think is our lower number day. I'm not sure. The reduced tickets, I like the numbers. The biggest complaint I've heard for the past five years is the ticket prices. And I know there's reasons for that, so I'm just saying what I hear. But I'm just kind of giving you verbally of where I'm going, so when we come back and talk about this again, those are the things I'm looking for. Those are the things I'd like explained. But I'm really excited, um, that if you are hopefully interested in sitting down with the three entities altogether, uh, to discuss, I think that's really where we need to be. Unfortunately, we're running out of time now, so it's something that we're going to have to keep moving on and, and getting there, but, um, I'm supportive of, of having that discussion. Thank you, Mayor.
Did you have some comments?
Yes, if I.
It's a.
Sorry. Hi, thank you.
All right, no worries.
So I know that you had mentioned, uh, about our, our vision, not necessarily, um, really ever going towards, um, other charitable contributions, um, towards the community, and it was more so in focusing on our event, uh, annually. So we would, while we are dedicated to creating the event, um, that is still enjoyable and accessible to all of our Beaumont residents and our surrounding neighbors, um, that our, our goal right now, um, is to use that as an opportunity to serve as a catalyst for year-round community engagement. So, uh, we're actually looking to, um, revision and rebrand ourselves as a, a nonprofit organization that gears itself on not only a community-wide event annually, but also, um, year-round, um, community contrib, contributors. And so we are focusing on that currently with smaller, um, prof, uh, nonprofit, um, partnerships, other, uh, organizations, um, sorry, I'm trying to think. While we are still in the process of, of uh, organizing the event and coming up with all of our ideas and looking for ways to, um, become more transparent, more open with communication, um, specifically with the city, um, with Parks District. So that way we, uh, have a, a different reputation throughout the community. Something a little bit more positive and, uh, welcoming, um, for everybody. So with that being said as well, we did want to also, uh, just kind of let everybody know about another idea that was, um, could have potentially, be given to you, uh, for the thought process while we, um, continue to have like these discussions and these meetings, um, which would be even a, uh, less, uh, exponential request, um, of something around 200,000 or 150,000. Cause this could allow for, uh, funds to be allocated towards entertainment, um, as well as the ticket subsidization. So, um, one option, um, that we are considering would be like online exclusive discount codes. And, uh, that would allow, um, allowed to be distributed exclusively to Beaumont residents. And it would be reduced prices such as $5 Thursday nights versus free just because the 350 or the, you know, it would, you know, numbers moving, things like that. But also, uh, that $10 admission fee for the additional three days, just like how we had suggested in the, um, first proposal. So things like that, now numbers moving around, still wanting to offer, um, more options for everybody and to see what would be most beneficial. This would be included with at-the-door pricing being different, um, being still a, like a $15 charge instead of 18 like last year, um, to ensure that the sponsorship benefits that you would be contributing to us cater towards the Beaumont community. Things like that. So just full transparency, we are open to being more transparent and having, um, greater communication with everybody. So if you ever need me, just give me a call.
Thank you very much.
Email, email. I'm way better at email. That was all. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mayor Protenvoi?
Yes, I, I thank you guys for coming out and for getting creative with that conversation as well. The Cherry Festival is one of my favorite things that we have here in Beaumont. And, um, you know, the entertainment, uh, as Councilmember White and everybody else has said, has always been something that, um, is important. One thing I just want to mention is that I think we're kind of dealing with two conversations a little bit. We have what we're going to do this year and then what we're going to do for the future. And so I think as we move towards the conversation that Councilmember White asked for and maybe having, I sit down with the three entities, um, we can talk about those two things. What does it look like now? And I would even be willing to suggest that we commit, you know, $100,000 now, since that's what's, you know, to put you guys a little bit at ease because that's what's in the budget. So for me, I feel like I can commit to that. And then the next time we can bring forward some other suggestions and maybe commit to an added benefit, um, along those lines. But to give you some peace of mind in, in that aspect. But I do think that we need to consider some other options. I like the online discount code. I think as Councilmember White spoke to as well, um, the use of our PIO. We have the billboards as you're going down, you know, uh, the Ukipa grade and some elsewhere that I think could help generate revenue and, and bring people in as well to encourage that. So, um, and I think that from my perspective, you know, considering a, a donation back to what we had previously done with police and fire, you know, would be something that I would entertain as well, or would like to bring to the table to, to discuss with that also. But I think that those are, are my thoughts, um, for today. I think that this is a festival that, um, you know, is, is true to Beaumont and needs to continue on. Um, and we, we appreciate what you guys do for it.
Thank you very much. So question for Mr. Pinkney, on the, the 65,000 for scholarships, would that be considered a gift of public funds if it's coming from the city?
I, I don't have enough information to really answer that because if it's scholarships to somebody in Northern California hypothetically, then, you know, it's hard to justify that. If it's scholarships to children in Beaumont, you, you could probably justify it. And what the city council needs to have is substantial evidence to support its conclusion that there's a public benefit served in the community from the expenditure.
Okay. Well, and I agree with, with Councilmember White that we do need to have the sit-down. I think that that would be beneficial for everybody. I do have some additional questions, and if it's okay with you, since you prefer emails, I can email them to Elizabeth. And it's just to help me for my transparency in regards to the audit, so I know what, what we're investing in and what we're doing. Um, so what I, what I would do or suggest with council's consent is to continue this item to April 1st. I'm sorry. Councilmember Finn?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm on the lines of, of Mayor Protenvoi on, um, committing to the $100,000 that we put in our budget, and same as what we did, um, last year, would support, you know, continuing the conversation. But perhaps any additional funds over that, a thought for me would be to help with advertising. And I think that would then serve our city well and justify additional funds that we put into it. But let that get shared with, with the group and, and see where that, that, that goes, but I'm on the lines of $100,000.
Okay, I think if we continue that, we'll just, we'll keep that in mind and, and bring that back. But, uh, Councilmember White?
First of all, the conversation about the scholarships and what I brought up about the free night, we just don't need to itemize that as what we're contributing to. We, we contributed to other things, and then they can, they, it'll free them up to be able to do the things that we're concerned about as far as public benefit. But I would like to make a motion, and, and my motion is that we approve the $100,000 that we have been budget, we have but budgeted. And then, um, uh, Councilmember Voit and I, she's the liaison for the Parks District, and I meet with the three agencies, uh, between now and the next council meeting. And then we come back to the council meeting and discuss if we want to do any further contributions after. But I think that would give, give them at least a, a, a budget to move forward with at this point. And we've already budgeted for that, and I don't see anyone up here saying that we're not going to go at least that high. So, um, that, that's my, I'm, real quick question for you guys. I don't know, have you already lined up the entertainment? Okay.
Yes, it's being finalized right now.
Okay, thank you. But, you know, like I said earlier, we don't even know that Parks District wants to do this next year. You know, so we, we need to have that conversation because that's going to change how we approach. It's going to change how I want to approach this year, um, based on discussions we have with all three groups together.
I'll second Mr. White's motion.
Yeah, I'll, Mayor, if I may, I'll just, I'll, I'll vote no on that. I just want to let you know now because you have my commitment of the $100,000. But I said earlier that I wasn't quite comfortable giving a lump sum. I still think we need to talk a little bit more. So I won't support that, but I just want to let you know that it isn't me. I'm not going to support the 100. I will. But I need more information, and if we're going to go talk about it and come back, I don't see why we're being premature at it. But that's my comment, so I just want to let you know in all full disclosure.
We have a motion.
Mayor, just to respond to that, it, would it, would it, you'd feel more comfortable if we did earmark that money for something that we could write the checks for?
Well, that, that was my, my concern was that I, I'd rather have it go to certain spots, and that's why I was waiting for you to talk to the, to see where that could go, where it's going to help them the best. That, that was my preference.
Okay.
But, um, you know, I understand that they're waiting for, you know, money and so forth. I don't know. Are we looking to return this back to the next meeting of April, where are we in? April 1st?
Correct.
That was the intention?
We have a motion in the.
Yeah, I, I think we should bring it back to the very next meeting. So, yeah, we need to get together in the next week.
All right, right. So, and that's fine. If, if we have a majority, and if I vote no and you still vote, I'll be okay with that. I just want to put that down because it'd be hypocritical if I just made that comment.
And I know Mr. Roush had a.
Well, no, no, well, I did want to mention, because we're kind of late in the game at this point. It's pretty far into the festival and scheduling it and budgeting and actually paying for it. So a lot of this money has already been, we've already spent money for the entertainment. We've done that kind of stuff. So if you're talking about earmarking for specific things, we've already done that. So it's kind of hard to do at this stage.
Well, my, my question is from a city point of view for accountability. If I just say, here's 100, and you say, well, I did it here, but if I say, here's 100 for that.
Sure.
Then, you know, that's.
Yeah, I'm just trying to be clear, just so we understand where we're at, because if this took place three months ago, that would have been a different story.
Mayor, may I ask him a question?
Sure.
So if we were to approve the $100,000 tonight, would, are you seeing that would probably go towards what you've already, uh, laid out in front?
It would probably help in that.
On that, yes. Okay.
So, you know, we, I mean, we have a lot of expenses upfront that, the entertainment is obviously the biggest, you know?
Okay, then, yeah, I appreciate that. Then I can reconsider that, so.
So, so Mayor, can I jump back in real quick? Have you already written a check to the entertainment company? Okay, thank you.
That's okay. I'm okay with that because I know where our numbers are, but anything else, we're going to have to.
Sorry, not, not a full check. So I'm so sorry. It was, it's just been a deposit so far.
Right.
So the, the final.
What the balance is approximately?
Um, so we have written a check out for $100,000 for our deposit, sorry, $110,000. And so the balance would be, uh.
Right, $115, something like that.
I don't believe so. I believe it's a $200,000 budget plus the $10,000 for the stage. So I believe it would just be $100,000.
So could, couldn't we just say we will write a check to the entertainment company for $100,000? You, you'd feel better about that?
Well, I would. Is that okay with, with staff? I want to ask staff, is that too cumbersome for you or?
No, I'm fine with that. Is, is it M and M?
Yes.
Okay, there already is a vendor set up.
So would you like to rephrase the motion?
Yes, I will amend my, with your approval of.
Certainly.
I'll amend my, uh, motion to say that we will, uh, contribute $100,000 in a check to M and M, and then we'll bring this back on April, what was it? April 1st. Okay.
All right, I'll second that.
And there's no public comment?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Ready for recall?
We're good. Real call, please.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protenvoi?
Yes.
Mayor Lara?
Yes.
I read an invoice from M and M.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work.
Sorry to be a stickler, but.
We're, we're trying to change.
I'm, I'm staying. I just need, my nerves are shot.
Mayor, can we have a moment?
Okay, we have a five-minute recess. We're back. So that brings us to item J six, recommendation for the city of Beaumont to host the Cherry Festival Parade.
Thank you, Mayor. The item that you have before you tonight is to considerate, cons, consideration of the city taking over responsibility, logistics, and coordination of the Cherry Festival Parade. This has been a longstanding, um, tradition in Beaumont, going down Beaumont Avenue. I believe it is 100 years old. Uh, the Rotary Club submitted a letter to the Cherry Festival Association stating that they can no longer orchestrate the parade, and subsequently, the Cherry Festival Association submitted a letter to the city saying that they just simply don't have the manpower. And, um, it is in our wheelhouse to put on parades. I think we do them well. We do the, um, Holiday Light Parade and the Veterans Day Parade. And so with that, I'm recommending that the, um, city council approve the city of Beaumont hosting the 2025 Cherry Festival Parade.
Very good. Nicole, do we have any public comments on this item?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
And I do have Doug on Zoom. He's at a conference, but he is listening in.
Okay, so that brings it up for council discussion. And, or a motion. Councilmember White?
Um, who did you say was on Zoom?
Doug Story. He's at a conference.
Oh, okay.
In case there's any logistical questions.
Um, I didn't add all this up, but what do you think it's going to cost total?
It to facilitate the parade, it's, I'm going to say about fifteen thousand. And we'll need community services and public works for another five, and then ten thousand for PD. So uh thirty thousand, yeah. And that'll come out of their current operating budgets.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Councilmember Finn?
I was just going to make a motion if there was any no no other comments. Um.
Go ahead.
All right. So I moved that we um um, the city council approved the the city of Beaumont hosting the twenty twenty five Cherry uh Festival Parade.
I'll second.
Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Uh, before I give my vote, I'd like to remind us that a while ago, when we first started doing the hundred thousand, we were expecting to have a little more um public notice that the city of Beaumont is doing this. So I think we need to brand the the Cherry Festival Parade in a way that people know that the city's doing it. It's still, you know, there, I just wanted to bring that up, and I vote yes on that.
Maybe maybe you could be the grand marshal?
No, thank you.
Okay, all right. Just checking. Now, that's a great idea.
Mayor Proten Voight?
Yes.
Mayor Lara?
Yes. Excellent. That brings us to item J seven, proposed projects for congressional appropriations funding twenty twenty five.
Brittany Navas, our grants analyst, is going to be presenting this item.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, tonight, I'm here to present the list of proposed projects for federal appropriations for uh fiscal year twenty six. Um, while the federal budget continues to operate under a continuing resolution through September twenty twenty five, um, the timing of the appropriation process remains uncertain. Therefore, staff recommends preparing now to ensure that we're ready to submit the applications the moment that we hear a word that they're uh open. So we're seeking your authorization to move forward with um submitting um the attached identified projects. So you'll see um just a high level overview that I've created for your review. Staff worked closely with our collaborative partners, uh David and Church Associates, uh Jamie Jones, our lobbyist, uh to define these proposed projects, to improve their alignment with the federal priorities and and enhance their competitiveness. Uh, we also work strategically to pick projects that would diversify the funding request uh across multiple appropriations accounts to um uh enhance our chances and our competitiveness to secure the funding. So a quick overview of the projects, you'll see that Pennsylvania Avenue grade separation, we submitted this last year as well. Um, so you know, we recommend submitting again, given uh the high dollar value that that project has. Uh, the downtown economic revitalization project, this would uh fund more money into that effort. The Beaumont Public Safety Cultural Complex, which would be a two million dollar, that's the thirty acres um that has been purchased near Mountain View. This would be planning money to help develop uh that vision. And the Critical Infrastructure Resilience and Wildlife Mitigation Project, that would be a five million dollar request. That's to underground um our power lines in our high fire risk area uh near Fourth Street. And finally, um the microgrid project for the wastewater treatment facility, uh which is a high burden on um the grid as well as uh infrastructure that we want to protect against uh public safety power uh shut offs. I also want to take a moment to assure council that staff continue to work collaboratively, both internally and with our external partners uh to stay informed on the evolving federal priorities as well as the guidelines that continue to develop and be issued out. So uh we will remain committed uh to be prepared for the changes that continue to arise. Uh, with that, um I'm available for any questions uh or further discussion.
Thank you. Nicole, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Mayor, can I just add one more comment? So these typically are the projects that we would package up in a in a nice little package to take back to DC with us when we walk the halls and knock on the doors. Um, I want to make council aware, I'm not recommending we go to DC this year. Uh, we're hearing from multiple sources that meetings are being canceled the night before, after teams have arrived. Um, that's happened to at least two agencies that I know of. And so I think at at this point, um it's not prudent for us to go to DC, but that's just my recommendation. It's entirely up to council.
Thank you very much. Open for council questions? Councilmember White?
I know, but it, I don't, I I move the recommended action for J seven.
I'll second.
It really quickly before we take roll call, I just have one question. I I think on the wildfire mitigation, I think it would be important to note that that wastewater treatment plant is in a very high fire area according to the severity zone map.
Absolutely, and that's something that is noted.
Perfect.
Uh, that will be included.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor, on on that, so as a real estate agent, I've been I've been informed that there's new maps coming out at the end of the month, March twenty four. So if we could look at that again and if something were to change, you know, or or whatever.
There the, that will be coming to council because we are required to adopt an ordinance. So there's a hundred and twenty day um notice to the public period. It'll be put on our website and um it'll be brought to council.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call?
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Voight?
Yes.
Mayor Lara?
Yes. Thank you, Brittany. Hey, that brings us to J eight, adopt a resolution approving the CAL SIP stream gauge grant.
I don't know if council. I don't know if council has met Sunshine Sanchez. She is a management analyst working uh with the wastewater treatment plant team. And so she's going to give us her presentation.
Uh, I I just, I just also want to note that uh Sunshine did all the heavy lifting on this item as well. So we're really uh eager for her to present it.
announced that the city of Beaumont Wastewater Department, sorry, was it on there? Has applied for and received approval for the grant from the Department of Water Resources. The grant will provide funding for four new string gauges. And they'll be installed in the Cooper's Creek and San Timoteo Creek. As part of our permit and ongoing environmental plan, these gauges will be crucial for monitoring water flow and water quality. The new string gauges will provide real time data, um help track water water conditions, assess potential environmental impacts, and contribute to the state water management efforts. City staff is requesting city council approval to adopt a resolution accepting the CAL SIP grant and authorizing the execution of funding, the funding agreement. And with that, I will answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Nicole, do we have any public comments on this item?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Okay. Open it for council discussion or or motion?
I would say if there's no comments, I'll I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Okay, so I I moved that we waive the full reading and adopt by title only a resolution of the city council of the city of Beaumont author is authorizing the funding request, accept and execution for the CAL SIP stream gauge grant.
I'll second.
Roll uh roll call, please.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Voight?
Yes.
Mayor Lara?
Yes. Brings us to item J nine, approval of contract for financial auditing services.
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve a five year contract for a total of three hundred and thirty seven thousand one hundred twenty five dollars with Rogers, Anderson, Malotti, and Scott, LOP, to perform audit services and authorize the city manager to sign the engagement letters for each year of the five year contract.
I'll second.
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, go ahead. That's fine.
Um, so I read in the in the in the staff report, um, and could you explain, it says there um, there must be a change in the partner in year six. And so since we've used them the past five years, can you explain that?
Yes, so what'll happen is they'll switch out the partner for the sixth year or after the sixth year.
Meaning the individual auditor?
The individual partner from Rams.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's it's a law requirement.
Okay.
That they swap out the partners.
So I didn't know if partner meant person or if it meant.
No, just the person.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Voight?
Yes.
Mayor Lara?
Yes. Brings us to item J ten, request to approve service agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Um, given that my son is the fleet manager for Raceway Ford and um Enterprise is on and oftentimes a customer of theirs, um I'm going to recuse myself on this item.
Think this, has that been addressed? Okay. Okay.
Sorry, you didn't say something.
He's leaving, so I have to bring it back.
Captain Ramos?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. As soon as I can find the right page. Uh, wow, it's a long one.
No, no, you gotta read it.
I move to approve the service agreements with enterprise Enterprise Fleet Management for procuring leasing, outfitting, and retiring fleet vehicles. Authorize the city manager to sign the master lease agreement. Authorize the city manager to sign the sourceful agreement with Enterprise Enterprise Agreement to sell customer vehicles, consignment auction agreement, self assurance add in addendum, and government credit application. And yes, I know I left out a little bit up up above, but it wasn't that important.
I'll second.
A roll call, please?
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Voight?
Yes.
Mayor Lara?
Sorry.
Yes. Thank you. Try not to be so long winded next time, okay? Okay. Item J ten, request to approve service, oh, nevermind, we just did that one. That was quick. Item J eleven, wastewater treatment plant improvements project, CIP WW twenty four dash zero one, reject all bids and authorize city staff to revise bidding documents and readvertise for bids. Paxton?
Good evening again. Yes, uh, as the title suggests, we're here um to request uh council approve the rejection of all bids and to uh direct staff to readvertise. Uh, the bids came in significantly over our budget. Uh, we did identify a couple of uh items, uh bid busts in there. So we've um rewritten the uh bid forms, um pared back some of the items in hopes to get a more uh in line bid with our budget.
Okay, thank you very much. Nicole, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Okay, I'll open it up for council discussion. Councilmember White?
What was the original budget?
Uh, two point four million.
Um, okay, thank you.
Mayor Proten Voight?
Yes, I'll move to direct staff to return, oh, wait, excuse me, authorize staff to reject all bids, prepare revised bidding documents, and readvertise for new bids following the established bidding procedure.
Roll call, please?
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Voight?
Yes.
Mayor Lara?
Yes. Okay, J twelve is the follow up report, local state of emergency sewer mainland failure and emergency repairs in Fairway Canyon. Paxton's up again.
Yes, so two weeks ago, uh, we came before you to ask uh council to uh de- declare an emergency. And as part of that, uh, there's a requirement for uh follow up. So tonight, uh, we are um coming to council with a follow up of the status of the emergency. Um, due to the weather and uh engineering, yeah, obviously no uh active um repairs have gone on to address the situation out there. Um, that's not to say that our crew hasn't been hard at work. Um, they must uh man this uh around the clock, check on it, um fuel the pumps, um check the pressures of the pneumatic plugs, et cetera. So it it has been quite a bit of work. Um on the office side, we have worked with uh our engineers and we've come up with a uh what we believe to be a viable plan to not only uh make the repairs, but uh make them in such a way that they're not as prone to failure as the uh existing structure was.
Thank you, Paxton. Nicole, do we have any public comments on this item?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Well, real quickly, I'd just like to share my appreciation with staff. I understand it's every four hours that they've got to run down, check the gas and make sure that the bladders are full and um, so it's it's a lot of work. Also, um, looking at the the efforts that you guys have gone through to make sure that the keeps flowing, which is important, especially with all the rain that we've had. It's greatly appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from council?
Not all make a motion? Are you gonna make it? Oh, it's just direction.
Oh, direction.
I did want to also thank you for the quick reaction you guys did on that, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so you just bring it back. Um, did we hear back from the water board yet or?
Um, the water board uh was onsite the day of the spill. We call into what's known as CAL OES. It it's a broadcast system. We get assigned a case number. Um, they showed up that day, uh, saw what's happening, followed up with a kind of a field trip with multiple staff. Um, we gave them a tour. They saw the site. I think the site is really difficult to comprehend from a paper map compared to the conditions there. It's very deep. It's inaccessible. Um, they verbally indicated they were really uh impressed with our response and that the site visit greatly helped them understand the situation. Our mandatory state reporting, we have three days to submit initial draft report that was done on time. And then from that point, you have a total of fifteen days to submit your final report, which was due today, and we have submitted it to the state.
Okay, perfect. I just was hoping you would mention the fact that staff had gone above and beyond and that the 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 board representative was very impressed with the work that we did. So again, kudos to you and your staff.
We did not mention that we found your golf ball over there.
That and that that is truly unfortunate, but uh it's okay. Thank you very much. And we will see you again. Uh, okay.
Yes. We'll be back in two weeks.
That brings us to item K, legislative updates and discussion.
Uh, no update tonight, Mayor.
Okay, how about um item L, economic development update? No? No economic, um, treasure report. And that's uh detached. City clerk report?
No report this evening.
City attorney report?
This evening.
City manager report?
Just a couple uh updates. We are kicking off Beaumont Nights twenty twenty five on April seventeenth from five to nine. We are doing a community cleanup this Saturday from eight to twelve at Cougar and Beaumont Avenue. And a morning with the mayor is starting March the thirty first at Panera. We are doing a color run March thirtieth and a um, we are help supporting the Chamber of Commerce Spring Break Beaumont Business Egg Hunt Shop Local Type Event from March thirty first to April twelfth.
Mayor, I have a a question or two. Um, what was the name of the run?
Color Run.
Can you spell it for me?
Color, C O L O R.
Colors.
Color.
Color Run.
Can you use it in a sentence? I'm just kidding.
You get thrown, like, paint at you.
Okay, because I heard in um Beaumont Chamber Breakfast, the Spirit Run, that's not. Okay, because I heard in, um, Beaumont Chamber Breakfast, the Spirit Run. That's not the same run we're talking about.
No, no, the Spirit Run is being planned.
But we are, we are doing the Spirit Run.
Yes, we are. Uh, I think it started out as.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we started, yeah, uh, Stephen Legion and I started about fourteen, thirteen, fourteen years ago. It was called the Spirit Run. And the idea was that we retired to selling candy bars for our kids. So we thought we'd come up with a fundraiser and, and replace that money for the PTAs so that, um, and we did it for a couple of years and then just sort of, I think the Rotary adopted it.
Rotary took it over and then the city took it over and it morphed into breezing through Beaumont.
Breezing through Beaumont.
It's, it's been, uh, dormant for several, several years.
It's, it's a five-k run, right?
Correct.
So, so so you guys know five-k is just under three miles? Yeah, so it would probably only take you forty-five minutes to an hour. So I would hope you are all gonna join me in the run?
That's exactly.
All right.
All on the same day?
I will run. Yes, all at the same day.
You can't break it up?
Nope.
Okay.
Sorry, not over.
I will, I will catch you on the, on the trail there.
I think they will have a senior walk, right?
We will now.
The one-k.
Or crawl. I'm open, I'm open to either. A walker, that, that works too. I'm not proud. All right?
It's for wheels. We can push.
Listen, listen.
The wagon.
It's enough. Okay, we, that brings us.
Mike, if you get a wagon, I'll pull you through. Okay?
Okay, that's a possibility. Covered wagon. Okay, future agenda items. Do we have any future agenda items? All right, that brings us to council reports. Councilmember Finn?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the fifth of, uh, March, I attended RTA's, uh, Riverside Transit Agency's Budget and Finance Committee and just had an insurance, um, you know, renewal for their bro, insurance brokerage on there, but they did give an update, um, as to some projects that were in the works. They have a hydrogen fueling station that's going to, expected to be online in eighteen months. And lots of bus orders, and they also talked about, um, their dial-a-ride, um, getting software for that than an app will be available for that. So that seems pretty exciting for it. Um, and they've got, um, twenty-five dial-a-ride vans are, they're going to be, um, received, um, thirty mid-sized CNG buses. And then they plan to put in order for fifteen heavy-duty CNG buses. Um, and so there's a lot that's going on with Riverside Transit. And then, um, in reference to our, a local chapter of our Transportation Now, um, committee, we had a presentation um, from RCTC's Brian Okunanan. And he talked about the Inland Empire Commuter Experience MetroLink Free Real Pass Program and some other updates in reference to, um, efforts in carpooling. And a website I'd like to pass on is IE commuter dot org. And there's some resources out there for employers and, and so forth to be able to pool their employees together and do a carpool, and there's some incentives with that and so forth. And so if we're able to help spread the word with our social media, I think it would be a benefit. Um, and so that's my report for the evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so EDC was canceled. Uh, of course, we attended the zoning workshop. And, uh, the youth council gave the report, uh, but just to highlight, the banning interaction with the youth council was really, really informative, and they were both excited, both groups. Um, Benny was impressed with the way we did things, and from when we went there the week before, uh, two totally different ways of doing things. Banning does their council up on the dais. But they only had like six or seven members, or we have like fifteen or so. It was difficult for us, but, um, they both exchanged ideas and they're planning to do a collaboration event next year, so they're going to try to work on that this year. So, that's, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember White?
Uh, the RCTC meeting this, uh, month was a big meeting for Beaumont, and Robert, I want to thank you for coming out. I know you had something better to do that day. We approved the use of two million dollars of Tump fees to start the project initiation document for the I-ten State Route seventy-nine interchange. And then we also awarded the con, construction contract on the inter, on the, uh, Portero Interchange Project and approved cooperative agreements with the, uh, city of Beaumont, Trail, Caltrans, and, um, and we're moving forward on all that. So that was, um, a pretty exciting meeting for us. That's all I had.
Mayor Proton Voight?
Yeah, on the fifth, we held the collaborative meeting here, um, with the Parks District. We had the library, um, and a couple other entities that were here with us as well, so we appreciate the, uh, collaboration with them. Otherwise, that's it.
Thank you. Um, on the, March twelfth, I attended the Four Seasons Community Meeting with staff and WR COG Executive Finance Committee Meeting. Um, and then attended the Mr. Chief Tullis's farewell luncheon, which was very nice and done very well. And that, that's all I have. With that, I'll adjourn the meeting this evening at nine thirty-seven. Oh, we're going back into closed session, sorry.
Adjourning the open session, we'll go back into closed session and then we'll, uh, report out afterwards.
Which country? Oh, okay. It's your daughter's telephone? Is he good?
Yeah.